This open meeting of the Grafton Zoning Board of Appeals is being conducted both remotely and in person, consistent with Chapter 22 of the Acts of 22 extending remote meeting protocols through March of 2025. This meeting is convened by a Zoom video conference and in person, as posted on the meeting agenda, which can be found on the Town of Grafton website. Please note that this meeting is being recorded. All participation in this meeting will be visible to others. Share your screen, be aware that others may be able to see it, and that it may be recorded for future broadcasts, and that I believe this is being broadcast live. This meeting may feature public comment. For anyone attending virtually, use the raise hand feature in Zoom. For those on the phone, the meeting administrator will allow you to speak. For those in person, we ask you to step up to the podium, and all speakers state your name and address prior to making any comments. And each vote in this meeting will be taken by a roll call vote. All right, with that, we have a couple of continuations from the prior meetings to start with. So let's...
So Elmwood, she emailed me in a request to withdraw without prejudice.
Okay. So we don't have to take any action on that, right? No vote?
No.
No, we have to vote on it.
We have to vote to allow her to do that.
Okay.
I suppose in theory, we could say no.
How much business do we need? I'll bring that up on the discussion.
So, Mr. Chairman? McCusker.
I move that we allow case number 8901, a Rihanna Fiera of 16 Elmwood Street, South Grafton, to withdraw her modification of a special permit without prejudice.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Take a roll call vote. Ms. Reed?
Yes.
Mr. McCusker?
Yes.
Mr. Adams?
Yes.
Mr. Yeomans?
Yes.
Chairman votes yes. So case number 890-1 withdrawn.
And you'll make sure that her request is added to the record?
Yep, yeah, I got it stamped in with the town clerk Monday when I'm in. Yep.
All right, so the next case is case number 816-2 for 296 Upton Street, modification of a special permit. Ask the applicants to step forward.
Hi, Mr. Good evening, Mrs. Chairman. My name is Tven Nguyen, and this is the property owner, Kim Doe. She's here with us today. I think last time, we were requesting Saturday opening for the flea market, and the liquor license also be allowed to sell alcohol on Saturday as well.
So just to be clear, this board can't grant or extend the liquor license. We can only modify the special permit to allow the beer garden to be open, but the serving of alcohol is outside of our purview.
Okay, that's fine.
That you have to go to the select board and ask them to amend it.
And you already have, I believe.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So also, in that initial request was to operate a restaurant from Monday through Friday, and I...
Right, we withdrew, yeah, we withdrew that for now, yeah.
Okay, so that part of the application has been withdrawn. So have you consulted with an attorney or have any additional information?
No, because I don't think that I was needed, so we have the facility that was open, allowed to open on Sunday, and this is just an additional hours to open on Saturday.
Any comments from the board or discussion?
Yeah, I think because they withdrew the restaurant part of it, there really isn't any more that they necessarily needed from any sort of attorney. And I think the request at this point is just to allow them to operate the flea market on Saturday and be able to have the beer garden open on Saturday. I'm not sure that we even have jurisdiction over the flea market open on Saturday, but we definitely have jurisdiction over the, well, it's fairly, the town attorney's opinion indicates that we can have, you know...
But then he flip flopped on that.
Yeah, it's not clear. It go either way. You know, I think what he was saying is we could just take the stance of, you know, they can operate it anytime the flea market is open. Personally, I would rather be clear, I worry about a slippery slope that that building turns into a nightclub.
I agree.
Okay, so I think we do want to be very careful, and I think I would like to see us, you know, do a modification that basically explicitly states we're allowing now Saturdays in addition to the Sundays and Mondays or whatever.
Do we put an hourly time limit?
That's exactly what I was just going to ask.
Because, I mean, you throw out an example of a nightclub, and all you got to do is have two tables outside, and you got a flea market at 10 o'clock.
I understand that. I understand that, so I can't remember now where what the other findings were.
For the record, we're not planning to open any nightclubs or anything.
No, it's not you, but it may be somebody you decide to sell the building to.
If you ever sold it.
Right, right.
Down the road.
Did we ever get a copy of the liquor license, the beer license?
I have a copy of it.
Does it give times?
Nope.
Nope.
Because when we have to do the 106 inspection, I get a copy of the liquor license.
Okay, how about, how about like P O Pub or any, they don't never have times?
Nope, none of them.
It's a state that says you're going to close at 1:00 or 2:00?
Correct.
Oh, okay.
Correct. Not the town, it just says they have the right to sell it, because that's part of the 106 inspections, is they have to get the building and fire safety inspection first before they can renew their liquor license and their food permit. So I get a copy of the previous year's ones, and it does not have hours listed.
And, you know, I don't know that we can necessarily go there, and, you know, I think, Peter, if they were to, you know, decide they're going to open it up as a nightclub and just have a couple tables selling junk, you know, then that's a battle of towns that's going to have to have, I think, at that point. I think, you know, I don't know, I don't know how much more we can do.
I mean, we can put a condition, whether there's teeth in it, I don't know, but it would have to be appealed.
It's a good question, Chair. Is there a time limit on the Sundays, do they?
No.
I think they're usually, what are your Sundays hours, 8 to 6?
No, 4, 5 to 4.
Oh, 5:00 AM to 4?
Yeah.
Because they start setting up?
Yes.
Is it really daylight hours? Is that...
Yeah, yeah, but, you know, like the dealers come early to set up so that they can sell as, you know, as soon as...
But to let the public in, what time is that? What time's your gate open?
At 5:00. We open at 5:00 for the vendors, and then customer can come whenever they...
Oh, so you have somebody collecting money to get in?
Yes.
Right at 5:00, basically?
Yes.
Oh.
Yeah.
Do you have a posting on the timings or...
Yes, we have, we have it on the website and...
What does that say, 5 to...
Yeah, 5 to 4.
So would there be an objection to the permit saying operating hours are 5:00 AM to 4:00 PM for the beer garden?
We normally, like, it's only noon time that, you know, I mean, like, we serve them at all, because nobody want to drink at a cold hour.
So it seems like you won't be opposed to it, right? You'd be put the timing in.
Where I was headed was, that's a good point, I didn't think about the front end of it, I was just thinking on the back end of 4:00 PM.
How about 10 to 5? Give them an hour after closing.
I was thinking beer garden operation not allowed after 5:00 PM.
Sounds good to me.
Yeah.
Yeah, that gives them an hour after they close.
So we can make, all right, so Katrina did have, we do have a draft decision, so, you know, I think what we can do here, you know, right now, it says, as it did in the other one, sale of alcohol, beverage shall be conducted as an accessory use to the operation of flea market only during hours of flea market's operation, Saturday, Sunday, Monday, holidays from April 1 to December 25th. By the way, this says December 25th in the...
It's a typo on the legal, it's supposed to be December 25th.
Okay, and so we just add another condition.
Wait a minute, we're taking out the calendar though, right? Because they want to operate year round?
No.
No, this is just the flea market, we're not on the restaurant.
Oh.
Yeah, the restaurant was going to be year round.
Yeah.
The flea market...
Oh, the flea market was still going to be?
Yeah.
Okay.
Beer garden operation is not allowed after 5:00 PM.
On both days, Saturday and Sunday?
I was just going to leave it just period, not allowed after 5:00 PM, so I think between the two of them.
Automatically carries.
One of them ties it to the operation, Saturday, Sunday, Monday, and then beer garden operation not allowed after 5:00 PM.
Are we fixing the general finding?
I left it blank, I didn't know if you wanted anything in there, that's why I left it blank.
So my thinking on the general findings, we just do what's on the modification, because this is, again, another modification. The modification, the general finding is, the changes reviewed as minor and were in conformance of special permit number 801.
Yeah, I didn't know if that's what you wanted in there, that's why I kind of left it blank.
I mean, I don't think we lose, you know, all of the findings for 801, and then essentially 801-1, the modification, I mean, this is a modification, right?
Yeah, so it's 8...
So all the findings still apply.
Yep, it's 8, this one is going to be 816-2.
I was thinking number nine on the original, which is the, that generally operates only on Sundays and Monday holidays, was the thing that created the bakery.
So we could, you know, I don't know, do you do a carve out, you know, with the exception of finding, general finding number nine? Everything else consistent? I mean, the original permit, original special permit went as far as to specify adding an outdoor seating area 40 by 50 inside, so this is number 11 I'm reading, but that got changed.
Right.
With the modification, but...
Yeah, because they went from a standalone place away from the building to it being right next to the building.
But the point is, you know, that we didn't...
Right.
That was in the findings of the original permit, and that general finding didn't do anything to, you know, contradict that or take it out or anything.
Yeah.
I mean, I guess it's irrelevant, because we're saying it doesn't really matter what
So, I mean, yeah, well, one other general finding, though, I do think we need in there. If we have the, you know, the changes as minor, whatever that language is, is in the first modification, but I think we do need a second one that says something like, request for restaurant, for restaurant to be open Monday through Friday, and I think that's the language they use, allow restaurant to open Monday through Friday. So the request for restaurant to be open Monday through Friday was withdrawn by request of the applicant. I think we want that in there, so it's clear.
Yep.
That we addressed it.
Yep, that's good.
So I think those are our two general findings, and then we've added a condition, beer garden operation is not allowed after 5:00 PM, that really should become the condition number three. And then that last one, number four, decision specific to approvals.
Should we have a separate vote on the withdrawing of the restaurant itself?
I think we voted on that last week, if I look at my minutes. That vaguely rings a bell.
You think we already voted on this?
I, I thought they had withdrawn that request last week. I didn't keep a copy of the minutes.
I've got a copy here.
It was just continued, that's the only thing we voted on.
Oh, okay, so then maybe we have to do that to withdraw it.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, Chairman directs staff to speak to town clerk.
Yep.
It says applicant willing to withdraw the request for the restaurant.
Okay.
Until we figure out the process.
So, I mean, I could do, I could do a motion along the lines of, you know, ZBA grants a modification, no, grants a modification of special permission on May 5, 2016, to Grafton Flea Market, to allow the flea market, oh, to allow the flea market to open on Saturdays from April 1 to December 25th, and to allow the beer garden to open on Saturdays from April 1 to December 25th.
So I just got an email from Colleen Roy that the select board opened a public hearing for the liquor license modification in July, and it was continued until after they got their hearing with us and their approvals with us.
Okay.
So just to let you know. Thanks, Colleen.
Yeah, I mean, I don't see why I can't just do a, a motion similar to what I just did, and then the decision is, you know, decision essentially is what's been drafted.
Okay. And then have them withdraw the other one?
No, that's already documented in the decision.
Oh, okay.
Oh, what do you think?
I mean, I don't think it would hurt to have a separate vote on it, just to be clear on the record, but I think you just include that in the motion, just include it in the motion. Do it as one vote.
So, okay, so I didn't have that in the motion. All right, then why don't I just do a motion, you know, so I, you know, I move that the ZBA allow the Grafton Flea Mar, no, T and K Real Estate Holdings LLC, DBA the Grafton Flea Market, to withdraw their request for a restaurant to be open Monday through Friday from 11:00 AM to 9:00 PM.
Second. That sounds good.
Motion made and seconded. Do a roll call vote. Ms. Reed?
Yes.
Mr. McCusker?
Yes.
Mr. Adams?
Yes.
Yes.
Chairman votes yes.
And that doesn't change my general finding, general finding still is request for restaurant to be open Monday through Friday was withdrawn by request of applicant. So then, the next thing is, I move that the Grafton Board of Appeals grant a modification, grant to TK Restaurant, T and K Real Estate Holdings LLC, DBA the Grafton Flea Market, 296 Upton Street, a modification of special permit, oh, we should have the number here.
It's 816-1 is what we're modifying.
Really?
Yes, because 816 was the original, 816-1 was the first modification, and this one will be 816-2, because it's the second modification.
So we're allowing the beer garden to operate on Saturdays? We're not, we don't have anything to do with the flea market being open on Saturdays, right?
That is not 100% clear. I think you're right. You know, I guess I was including it just because they asked for it.
I think it should be when the flea market's there, that they can't just have a beer market, beer garden without a flea market.
That, yeah, that stays.
We're clear on that. I, I think just the wording that, the restating that the flea market can be open on Saturdays, I don't think we need to, because that's, that's a different, I guess, I don't think we need to allow them to do that.
They can do that, they can open the flea market some days a week, I believe, right now.
All we're doing is extending the beer garden to be Saturday.
Which is all, which is all we did back when it first came out.
Yeah, okay.
I was just including it because they asked for it, but I, if you don't think I, we should include it in the motion, then I won't.
No, I think we should abstract that.
All right, give me a quick second here. All right, so all this goes away, and it just becomes to allow the beer garden to open on Saturdays from April 1 to December 25th. So then, okay, so then I move the Grafton Board of Appeals grant to, grant to T and K Real Estate Holdings, blah, 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 296 Upton Street, a modification of special permit 816-1 to allow the beer garden to be open Saturdays from April 1 to December 25th. I think that's it.
Timing or no timings?
No timings. Well, that's in the conditions. All right, subject to, let's just put it in, subject to, condition that the beer garden, what did I write here? Where do I put, beer garden operation is not allowed after 5:00 PM. So that's there, and then we can formalize it here.
And it's already in the permit that the flea market has to be operated?
Yes, that's already in.
Yep.
And this doesn't delete Sunday and Monday holidays?
Nope.
Nope. So it's this stuff, and then this part, and then this part. That's my motion.
Need a second?
Second.
Do you want to just re...
Oh, I knew you were going to ask me to do that. First of all, we should close the public hearing, and actually make sure there's no other...
No, there's nobody else on.
So we should close the public hearing first.
So entertain a motion to close the public hearing on case number 890-2?
No, this is...
816-2.
816-2.
816-2, sorry.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded.
Oh, this was a, a full blown hearing?
Yeah.
Yeah.
We opened it last.
Well, I was here, but you're...
You sure?
So roll call vote, Ms. Reed?
Yes.
Mr. McCusker?
Yes.
Mr. Adams?
Yes.
Mr. Yeomans?
Yes.
All right, so the public hearing's closed, and we'll wait for Mr. McCusker to make a motion.
All right, I move that the Grafton Board of Appeals grant to T and K Real Estate Holdings LLC, DBA the Grafton Flea Market, 296 Upton Street, a modification of special permit 816-1 to allow the beer garden to open on Saturdays from April 1 to December 25th, subject to condition, the beer garden operation is not allowed after 5:00 PM.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Roll call vote, Ms. Reed?
Yes.
Mr. McCusker?
Yes.
Mr. Adams?
Yes.
Mr. Yeomans?
Yes.
Thanks.
Chairman votes yes.
So...
The special permit is allowed.
Here's my notes on the decision.
Thank you. So it's pretty much written, I'll finalize it on Monday, I got to get these guys in to sign it, then there's a 21-day appeal period, but you'll be ready to go by April 1st.
Thank you very much.
And then, like I, we had sent you the email for the restaurant, you need to come before the planning department and the team development meeting, so get ahold of the planning department and set up a time to come in on a Thursday for the team development meeting that they have every Thursday at 2:00.
Okay.
So whenever you guys are ready for that.
Thank you very much.
Okay?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Good luck.
Good night.
So...
When you do minutes tonight, I may need one of your minutes, because somehow I'm like, I'll be dead. Thank you.
So Katrina, the update on Bridle Ridge?
So the update on Bridle Ridge, they have come to somewhat of an agreement. Pam Nichols, the abutter, who's on the corner of Bridle Ridge and Old Westboro Road, is selling them a 10-foot swath end to end. Hold on, I do have it up for you guys. Let me pull it. So it is in agreement at the moment. Pam has signed all the papers, so we're waiting for them, they need to come before the planning board with an A and R. So as soon as they do that, let me share my screen so you guys can see, I did give you guys copies, but it is kind of hard to see. So this is the swath they bought, it's eight feet wide end to end, or 10 feet wide, it's a 10-foot swath, so then they'll meet it. So as soon as everything gets filed, and then they've got to come before planning with the A and R. Our case is still in the civil court, is still in the court until everything gets filed, from what the attorney said, but I just wanted to give you guys an update that it is moving forward.
And are they going to provide as-built plans?
They will have to then provide as-built plans to the town so they can get that permit closed, showing the new setback. That will be, which was, it will probably be this, it'll just have that, you know, the middle line, this, they'll have this line taken out and show what the new setback is based on this line right here.
God, I hope they're not... God, I hope they're not off by an inch.
Well, that's why she made him take 10, 10 feet. She, because they went back and forth. He only wanted the eight feet, and she's like, no, you're taking 10. So, from what I understand. I don't know the whole debate they went through, but they bought a 10-foot swath.
Yeah.
A 10-foot wide. So it's, because they were seven and a half feet off the lot line, so now they should be, they'll make it. So I just, I just wanted to give you guys that update, just because that's been hanging for a while.
Yeah.
So are they gonna be withdrawing?
So they're not withdrawing, because we're appealing the constructive approval. So once, probably, I, I'm not sure, I will double check.
What did, what, what did we do?
Yeah, can you remind us? So what happened was, in the midst of one of the hearings, we forgot to continue it. So I was getting ready to republish it, and but because we forgot to continue it, The 14-day, or whatever number came up, and it got constructively approved.
Even though they requested the continuance.
Well, yes, they requested the original continuance, but because we didn't continue it at that public hearing, It fell on us for constructively approving it. So, um, but if it, The way variances are, if it's not going to technically get approved, it can't get constructively approved. But we still appealed the constructive approval. Well, since they got the extra 10 feet, will they not have to come for us?
I don't think they will. I, I think that they'll, they'll, they'll withdraw their appeal.
Yeah, I just.
Everything will go away.
Everything will go away, yeah. Yeah, right. Yeah, but they've got to get it all done, and then go to planning for the A and R, then file the A and R with the registry of deeds, so the new lot line gets, Right. Gets enacted, so. And then they won't need a variance, because they got their 10 feet. Correct. Um, and also, just to let you guys know, the Board of Selectmen have, have received two contacts for, um, our open position. Right now, this is the only thing that's on their February 20th agenda. I told them, that's fine, it can wait, we're not, because there's nothing That we're doing right now that they could vote on anyway. So, um, unless something changes, this will get probably pushed to their March meeting. So just to let you know that.
Can they appoint both of them?
No, one of them. They'll, they'll go through both of them, and they'll talk to both of them, and they'll only appoint one.
We only have one opening.
We only have one opening.
No, I, I mean, I, I didn't know there was a Set number of alternate positions, but I guess that's.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, we're a Board of Seven. Yeah. So that's, so that's the status on that one.
Alright, so, So that's it, right? We're now on to Elm Rock and Upton Road.
Yep.
Mm-hmm.
So at this time, I'll turn the meeting over to Mr. McCusker.
Thank you.
Hold on. Did you guys get copies of the draft?
Uh, yeah.
Okay.
I'll save for it.
Sure. It's a cheap work so hard on it, Clay. There you go. You can read it.
So I was thinking we'd start with Elm Rock. Just wondering if there's anything to even talk about there? Have you had any luck with the?
Yeah, I notified the, the, uh, the people that own the fence and gave them a, a diagram of the area, uh, of the easements. Um, and I'm hopefully gonna hear from them to do a sidewalk with them, to show them what exactly they can do, or to relocate the fence. And the good thing is, is that the easements are already located with concrete bounds, so it's pretty easy, so they could, could have probably followed the bounds realistically. Um, but they did do the, you know, the, the lot line's correct, so I think the engineer, the surveyor missed the drainage easements on the plan.
Okay.
And they probably didn't know. They went and did what they wanted to do, unfortunately.
Yeah.
Not maybe knowing what the concrete bounds in the ground were for, so. Uh, yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna try to work for them. I was hoping that the snow was gonna melt, so I could find them a little bit easier, but When it melted, we got a s- snowstorm right after, so I'm a little behind the heat ball on that one.
Um, so, so there probably isn't much to do tonight, I would, we expect Elm Rock. You probably can continue it.
Probably continue it. That's exactly right. I think Steve had some, uh, no, he's, is he, no, not here. I think he's working on some stuff, I think, with Dan or Kathy, our attorney. Uh, just some language stuff on the deeds, I believe.
Okay, alright, so.
Steve's on his way, though.
Alright, then we'll eventually continue.
We can continue it anyways.
Yeah.
It's a process.
Yep. Alright, then, uh, then I guess we can move on to, um, Upton Road. And, um, I know that Dan just, uh, shortly before the meeting dropped, um, Section of, of a decision. Um, and maybe, I'll just, unless, unless Chad, you have something you want to say, uh, about Upton Road, maybe I'll just turn it over to Dan, and he can kind of lead us through what we got here?
Yeah, absolutely. I, I don't think there is anything on our end of things, so I think, uh, Dan should have the floor.
Yep, okay. Dan, you, uh, Want us to take us, take us through where we are here with this?
Sure, no, I'm happy to. Um, I don't know, Katrina, do you want to put it on the screen?
I, you can, I, you can do it if you want. I just allowed you, I just put on the share, but I can put it up.
If you could do it, that'd be great, because I don't have, I, I'm on my laptop, and it's, it's not on my laptop, so.
Yeah, no problem.
Um, so what I did is I, um, I highlighted in yellow the major differences between this draft and the Pleasant Street project draft. Um, I mean, I, I really stuck to the Pleasant Street decision. We didn't, um, You know, have a lot of changes, uh, or, or variances from that. Um, and I assumed that the board and the applicant was, was happy with using that as the template. So I think we can just kind of run through it quickly. I mean, obviously, you can stop me, yeah, at any time, if you want to talk about a specific condition. And then, once we sign off on the conditions and the waivers, uh, then, a- as we've done in the past, Uh, I would then draft the findings that would go in front of the conditions. Um, and then you guys can review that at the next meeting, and presumably sign, sign the document at that time.
Okay, so just, um, so, so the, the rough game plan here is, let's go through this, let's make sure we're all on the same page with respect to Conditions and, and, and this document you have in front of us. Um, assuming we are, we would then close the hearing. And, um, the next time we meet, it would be with a full decision to, um, approve or disapprove.
Right.
Okay, sounds good.
Okay. So condition, conditions A, 1 through 9 are boilerplate, and there's no changes. Condition A 10 lists out the, uh, plans that were submitted by the applicant, so, Um, you know, I know the applicant just got this draft, um, about five minutes to seven, and I apologize for not having it done sooner. Um, so I'm, you know, if the applicant wants to review this, you know, tomorrow, and make sure nothing's missed, um, we can obviously make those changes. But I think I've captured everything here, in terms of the plans that were submitted. Um, I think the dates are correct.
Yeah, but the address is wrong. Yeah. We have 15, you have the Pleasant Street address and not the Upton Street address.
Oh, yeah. Yep, yep, good, thank you.
Wait a minute. All, I'm, I'm seeing, um, as far as the submittals, You know, the reserve of Pleasant Commons, that's not right, then the reserve, is this, this, this is Mistel Hills?
This is Mistel Hills.
Yes, so I'll, I'll change that right now.
Okay. I just assumed that all of these were the, were leftovers from, um, Alright, but, but we can, alright, you can get that tightened up out, you know, off, offline.
So Danny, are you saying it, it's just the names? You updated all the plan? Stuff?
Oh, yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, these are all changed.
That's not Pleasant Street. So you just didn't change the names? Okay.
Yep, I, I think I did. I, that was just one I missed, but the, um, I, I believe those dates are correct. I think the last version we have is December 13th. Um, Travis can correct me if I'm wrong. Um, the architectural plans, I don't think were ever revised, so Assume that the version that we have is, is the only version. Um, there are four landscape plans, four landscape plan sheets that were prepared, um, revised through October, but that hasn't, Um, I, I don't believe those have been revised. Um, there was an overlay plan that was submitted that I have in my file, uh, so I included that, and then we have the truck turning plan. So are you guys aware of any other plans that were submitted?
Uh, we had an initial lighting plan, right? But we'll need to revise.
That was part of the plan set?
Part of the plan set, so yeah, you think you captured that, Dan, in number one.
Yep. Yeah, there are 23 sheets in the plan set, um, and then there's the four landscaping sheets that were, You took them all off the last version, so I just included those as a separate category.
Just for the record, those will be updated, excuse me, with the, uh, you know, the final construction drawing.
Yeah. Alright, and then I guess, you know, scrolling down to A 11, um, I took these numbers from your application materials. I don't, I don't even know why we have bathrooms. I don't think that really matters. We'll probably just take that column out. Um, I, I just need the total number of market rate units for each of those bedrooms. I don't know if you have that right now. I can just plug them in, or?
Don't have it handy. But we can give that to you tomorrow.
Yeah, we can email it in the morning.
Okay. Uh, then just scrolling down, um, the submission requirements, I didn't make any changes here at all. So I, I think all of that is generic and, and wasn't, um, tailored at all to the Pleasant Street project, so I just le- left it as is. Um, Section C, uh, same thing. I haven't touched anything there from what we decided in Pleasant Street. C 7 is the hours of, of construction. We, we went back and forth quite a bit on that for Pleasant Street, so I just left that as is, unless you want to make any tweaks.
I, I mean, I don't see any reason to be making any tweaks here.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm o- I'm okay.
Uh, C 16, I gotta change that Pleasant to Uh, all in Upton Street.
We, we did have the market rate unit, Stan, if you want to go back to A 11, I'm sorry.
Sure.
Thirty-four one bedrooms. Sixty-eight two bedrooms. Twelve, twelve three bedrooms.
A total of 152, right?
Yep.
Okay, so going back down to section C, um, Yeah, there, there were no changes really to section C. Section D. So for section D, there's, there's still a limit of, uh, still a 25-foot wetland buffer. Um, there are some encroachments in that buffer That are shown in the plan. Um, so we're saying that there's no, you can't do any work in, in the 25-foot buffer, except for what is shown on, on the site plan. That's also addressed in the waiver section. We still have the, um, No site clearing within the drip line of any tree that's located within 10 feet of the perimeter of the project site.
Hey, hey, Dan, I'm just gonna interrupt you for a second.
Yep.
Um, I've done it a couple of times, and maybe I'm wrong, but I'm coming up with 153 units.
Yeah, I just did the same. Yeah, Clay's double checking on his end.
Yeah, I, I thought it was a trial. I'm glad I'm not the only one.
If we can't figure it out, we'll just email it first thing.
I thought it was an oddball one.
It was a good try, right? Thank you, Clay.
Right, right, so there, there's still an error in the chart. I'm sorry, Dan, go ahead.
Okay, I'll make a note of that.
Yeah.
Um, alright, so D 2 is the, uh, limit of work, same language from Pleasant Street. D 3 is the open space buffer. So in Pleasant Street, I think we had a 25-foot buffer, um, on that one, but looking at the plans, Uh, there's, there's several areas where they don't meet that, um, but they do meet 20 feet around the perimeter. So I put in 20, um, unless you want to change that, that, that seems to work.
Yeah, I mean, I think that's reasonable. You know, Pleasant Street had houses that were closer, I believe, and the one house is there, so.
Yep.
I, I think that's reasonable.
Going back one more time to that table, the three bedrooms, 80% EMI should be two instead of three.
The three bedroom?
Yep, three bedroom, 80% AMI should be two, and not three. That's the one.
Got it.
Unit we're off.
Okay.
That's gonna be an issue down under G 1.
Yeah.
That while we're talking about it, two, not three. I mean, just so you know, that, that's, in the MOU you signed with the Board of Selectmen, it, it did say three, not two, so. So, a minor nonconformity.
Are we at, are they at 25%? So that means there's 38. It's too late today for me to do that math.
I think we have an extra four.
Yeah, I thought it was heavy, wasn't it?
Because our original application was 156 units.
Well, Four times 38 is 152, so I mean, you're right, at 38 units is 25%.
Yeah, you have 38 affordable units. So that's.
We had one more when we were at 156, and we lost four units.
When did you lose the four units? Is that something we did?
No, I think it was the site, s- site grading. Yeah, no, it was, we just tried not to force it.
Okay.
I think it just made more sense. Yeah, we thought we could get walkouts on units. We didn't have get walkouts on.
So the MOU probably then also says 156.
Probably does.
Yeah, prob- yeah, that's probably correct.
Is that an issue, Dan? Uh, there's an MOU with the select board for a lip? Now there's four less units?
Not usually. I mean, I think, you know, uh, uh, this is a minor change to the project that DHD is not gonna care about.
I would think, yeah, okay.
The select, I mean, the selectmen didn't say they had to build 156 units. Um, and it said that 25% of the units shall be affordable. The breakdown that's in the MOU just has that number that says three instead of two, so that's, that's the only nonconformity, but, you know. I think that's really between the selectmen and the developer.
Yep, alright.
So, alright, so I guess we'll go back up to D, um, Alright, so I'll have a, we'll have a 20-foot buffer for D 3. And then I just noted that, um, exceptions are made for the frontage on old, old Upton Street And the drainage and grading that's shown in the site plans, that's within the 20, 20-foot buffer. Um, I took out the fertilizer condition that we had in the other one, since that, I don't think that's applicable here. We're not in a water supply protection district. Uh, on D 8, um, I added a sentence that says that the final landscape plan shall reflect The changes that are discussed in Jeff Walsh's letters. Um, and they need to incorporate the trail amenities that weren't on the original draft of those plans.
Um. You want to include lighting in that paragraph, too? Or you think, well, that'll come under site plan?
Well, I think you, you have a lighting plan. Don't you already have a lighting plan, or no?
We do. It needs to be updated.
Okay.
But it'll be part of the site plan set, so you probably have it covered under final site and landscaping plans.
Was there a comment about lighting? Did, did Jeff make a comment, or where did they?
No, just that when we modified, made slight modifications to the layout, it made the lighting plan slightly obsolete.
Okay, I mean, I think the, the submission that's gonna come in under A 1, um, will be reviewed by, by Jeff, so.
Probably covered.
Yeah, I don't think we need to spell it out. Uh, D 9, so I, I stuck a sentence in here, which I didn't highlight, but I should have. Uh, D nine, so I, I stuck a sentence in here, which I didn't highlight, but I should've, uh, that. And it just says that the, the relocated driveway that's serving the neighbor, um, should be constructed, um, not planted, constructed. Uh, before the issue into the first occupancy permit. Uh, I, I wasn't sure if that was an issue for anybody, but, um, it just seemed like that would be a good idea to, to make sure that gets done. Um, we're not chasing anybody to, to finish that work.
Seems reasonable.
Yeah, I'm, I'm fine.
Okay.
Alright. Um. I kept a snow storage condition in there, um, under D ten, uh. And then D eleven deals with the conveyance of parcel B, which is the open space parcel to the town of Grafton. Um, this language is pretty much the same as what we had in the Pleasant Street project. Um, but it includes some language about, uh, the, the applicant conveying, uh, the easement to the town for the access to the trails. Uh, which, uh, it comes out of the MOU, uh, the MOU required the conveyance of the easement and a parking easement as well. And then condition D twelve requires that the trail, um, be constructed prior to the first occupancy permit. Um, and, um. The applicant has to prepare a plan, uh, showing what this trail's gonna look like and ju- just like we did with Pleasant Street, uh, show that to the conservation commission and get their, get their rubber stamp on it.
Okay.
Um, section E, I left the same. No changes there, section F. Um, I just added a sentence that says there'll be no fewer than two hundred and eighty-five parking spaces.
Um, Dan, just going back to E. Um, you know, I just, you know, it sees like E five, after, shall forever maintain driveway utilities. I mean, should we call out specifically the, uh, sewer pump or anything like that, or is that covered under? Utilities.
It's, it's covered there, but it's also covered more specifically under the next, uh, under the sewer section.
Okay, alright, alright, sorry. Okay.
Um. So section F three, um. The fire, the fire chief, uh, or, or captain Colleen, uh, made a point that they wanna make sure that the fire department connections in the buildings are no further than a hundred feet from the hydrants, so just added that sentence or clause. Assuming that's not a problem for the applicant.
Nope.
Um. Uh, F eight, I just stuck in a catch-all there that, uh, the applicant must comply with Captain Colleen's, uh, requirements, which may have already been incorporated into the plans, um. I'm not sure if we ever got a letter from Captain Colleen saying that he was sati- satisfied that his comments were addressed, so I, I just stuck that in there as a, um. As a, uh, catch-all. Um. I'm assuming the applicant doesn't have an issue with his requests.
We don't, I think we got a clean letter, but then that comment came out about a hundred feet to the, uh, fire department connections, even though he gave us the locations of the hydrants shown on the plan, and then he followed that up recently with the hundred-foot thing, so I, it's no problem.
Okay.
Easily can comply.
Yep.
Alright, so section G one, um, I just updated that bedroom count for eighty percent, so now that says two, not three. Um.
That to- that totals up thirty-four of a matting rate.
Has it shoot?
Oh.
No.
No, it should be thirty-two.
Thirty-eight, thirty-eight.
Oh my god.
Alright, somebody take the iPhone out.
I have mine here.
Alright.
Oh, wait a minute.
Wait a minute.
Oh, the chart continues on the next page, yeah, page breaking there, so that's what did it, I'm sorry.
This, this has nothing to do with the decision, but how does it work when you're building a building for occupancy? I know how it works with houses, you build three houses, you gotta build the, uh, you build three market rate, you have to
proportionally.
Build, right, but how does it work with apartments? Do you have to have? You build a building, do you have to have the, um?
Twenty-five percent of that building.
Yeah, twenty-five percent occupied before you get the next permit?
No, not that, just, no, you can, just occupancy permit. It's okay to live in, occupancy permit.
But you don't have to have reticence?
No, no.
Because you could go through the lottery process and have no applicants.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So you could have a lot of empty apartments all the time?
We could, I don't thi- I don't think it's expected.
And is there a time limit? Do they become?
Dan might know better than us.
Can they become market rate if they're not rented for?
Nope, no.
No?
In perpetuity.
No.
Do we have wording of that, like we do with houses?
That's kind of a question for Dan if.
We got stung with that, remember?
With the houses, yeah, with the condos.
No, um, Milford Road. It was written wrong, the attorneys wrote it wrong.
Dan, are you hearing th- this conversation?
Yeah, so the, um, the original lease up for the building has to comply with this breakdown, um, I, I don't. I've never heard of a situation where they, where, where a developer can't find tenants to, to, to lease for these units, but they wouldn't be allowed to lease them for market rates. Um, and then when there, when there are vacancies, it's not, the affordable units aren't like they're, they're not assigned to specific
Right.
actual units, it's, all the units are exactly the same, you know, all the one bedrooms are the same, so if, you know, if as long as they maintain the percentage within the building, then it's, it's fine, and that's how it works on, on every forty B rental project in the state. Um, and this is actually governed more strictly by the regulatory agreement, it's all spelled out in that, which we're not a party to, but that's really between, you know, DHCD and developer. Um, but I think we have a phasing requirement in here.
So, so the units are all the same on the inside?
Yes.
Okay.
And then G three, that talks about the phasing, um. I mean, I don't know how really applicable this is because the I mean, I'm not sure if Bob issues individual certificates of occupancy for every unit or issues for a building.
It's for the building, so the whole building has to pass, cause we went through this with Sotier, the whole building has to pass for, to get occupied. If we're individual, like, what the building down at Winslow Point Up Institute wrote, those are condos. So those will get individual ones, but an apartment building, the entire building is one occupancy permit.
Hmm. Right, and then I think one of your sheets in the site plans designates, um. How many affordable units are in each building, if I'm not mistaken.
Yeah, and the ri- the ratio should be good for each building as well, so. The terminology, I'm not worried about, cause the whole building gets released and the units in there that are affordable versus market rate. We have to keep them within those limits, so, I'm, I'm okay with that.
And it's not like the fourth unit on the third floor will always be the affordable unit, it could move around.
Right, could move, I'm surprised at that. So you can't, you can't save money as a builder bu- by having less quality cabinets in the affordables like you can with houses.
We wouldn't do that.
Or floors or whatever.
No, not, not, not for apartments, they're all gonna be the same.
Alright.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, the homes, the homes are different, you know, homes are a different story, you know, instead of hardwoods, you know. Uh, you know, affordables, we, we'd give carpet or something like that, you know, but, uh. Uh, it's sometimes with mass apartment complexes like this, we just, we do massive orders of all, you know, engineered floors and things like that, so.
That's what the savings comes in, is the volume.
The volume.
Everybody, everybody gets fixed names, they're all the same.
No, this is my first
Yeah.
with, with apartments, so.
Well, I hope you're gonna come tour them when they're ready.
Oh, yeah, I'll, I'll come up.
Looking forward to it.
You might not want me up there. I know one builder didn't want me up there, but.
Alright, moving, moving along.
And, and Peter, just one more, one more comment on that, having the floating, so-called floating affordability, um, on this project actually works out well for us because um, there's annual certifications, income certifications, so if somebody becomes too wealthy to have an affordable unit, if, if they're no longer qualified, then their unit converts from an affordable unit to a market rate unit. Um, and then the applicant has, has to make the next vacant market rate unit an affordable unit.
Oh, yeah.
So it's actually better in some respects than for sale housing, we, we, we can really ensure that it, it really remains twenty-five percent affordable.
Yeah, I mean, you know, the question that wa- did come up though is, you know, somebody rents a fifty percent and their, their income goes up, so now they qualify for an eighty.
Yep.
But there's no eighties available, what happens then? So, so, I mean, you know, they have.
Their, so their unit would be now an eighty percent unit, and the applicant would have to create another fifty percent unit when there's another vacancy.
But, but if, if, oh, when there's another vacancy.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, alright, alright.
Rate to fifty percent.
I mean, this is a little bit complicated because they're putting in multiple income levels, so the typical forty B projects, only one income level, so it's easier.
Yep.
Um, I'm not really sure how this is gonna work since this is coming in different bubble.
This is, this is an owner's nightmare.
It might be logistical, but it, you know, serves a great use for the public, you know, to get in at those rates, you know.
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
Um. Let's see, we're back on G, I don't think there were any other changes in G from the last one. Um, I, I, I did note that I, I need to update the, um, G ones, I'll make that, those, those changes, the number of affordable units.
Yep.
So it's seven. Yeah, alright, I'll, I'll just fix this later. Take a note. Okay, um, moving on to H, sureties, um. So I updated the section, uh, H one. Uh, B, I don't know, A. So that, um. We have no oc- no occupancy permit for a unit and any building shall be issued um, until the base coat and all infrastructure serving the entire project has been installed. The basin binder coat, um, on the main driveway has to be installed. Um, when, when the, before the, serving the building, uh, before the building can be occupied. And then all infrastructure has to be constructed, um. Um, to serve each building as it become occupied. And then B is no more than half of the occupancy permits for the project shall be issued until all the infrastructure on the plan is completed, except for the final coat of pavement, um. Probably had a number of buildings here somewhere.
It, yeah, this is six buildings, right?
Where did I, yeah, did, see where that is?
You mentioned the six buildings back, we, a few pages back.
One's, one's the clubhouse, huh?
Seventh, the seventh is the clubhouse.
Seventh is, yeah.
Oh, it comes up in the mitigation, never mind, okay. Alright, so, so basically, I guess H one was the same, I thought I made a change, but I didn't, that, that's, that's pretty much the same as what it was in, uh, the other project. Uh, H two, no changes, H three, no changes.
I, I just wanna go back to, to H one if I can, Dan. I think, so if I, if I understand this correctly, A is basically saying no occupancy permit until base coat, um. Basically, uh, so this three, infrastructure described herein is shown on the plan, semicolon. Has been constructed to, to adequately serve said building.
Yeah, the semicolon is a, is a typo, I took that out.
Oh, okay, alright, got it.
So it's one, two, three, um.
Alright, alright, so, alright, so infrastructure described herein, shown on a plan, has been constructed to adequately serve the building, got it, and then B basically says all infrastructure is done by the time you get halfway through it.
Yeah.
Okay.
So we wanna, if that came from Pleasant Street, this is a different site. You know, if you look at those first two buildings when you come in on the left.
Yeah.
If, you know, why do we have to have binder coat all the way up in the back? If we're gonna build those first two buildings on the left first? You know, Pleasant Street, I see it, it's a smaller site, it's laid out differently.
Yeah, I, I mean, it's, you know, sometimes in, we, we've had projects where just to get the, the stormwater, et cetera, done, you, you have to, cause it all goes to the back, that's not the case here.
Right.
My intent here was not, not the entire parking lot, but, but just the driveway, so the driveway just ends sort of behind building two hundred, right? It just kinda stops there?
Yeah, you could say that.
Right, could be interpreted.
But you still want top on the driveway while everything's getting finished?
No.
It says basin binder.
He's sort of saying he wants the driveway, but then he's also saying we don't need, we only need to do the base for the associated buildings under construction, so, I guess the how do we, just as long as it's clear what the driveway, like Dan said. And I agree with him, would be sort of the top of that hill or whatever.
I mean, Steve, we would, we would build building one hundred and two hundred. You know, and those basins would be built in conjunction with all those anyways, it's just that I don't necessarily wanna build this entire thing drainage network wise, I mean, these buildings could be independent is what I'm saying. Cause all the infrastructures to serve buildings one and two could, could be done.
Yeah, like what Dan's saying, uh, but then, you know, the, the second part of is, the entire project of all the drain needs to be done before that, so.
Yeah, I think the wording could be clarified, cause we say base coat. And then we say binder, and then we say top, but, you know, base in this si- situation would if you're gonna list all three, base would be the gravel.
Right.
Then binder would be the first layer of as- of asphalt, and then top would be the top layer of asphalt.
Right, I mean, I was assuming that base was the first layer of asphalt and binder there, we're calling it top, that's why I was gonna ask for a clarification on that, cause why would you want top right at the beginning, right away? You're gonna be running low beds up there every?
Yeah, I think we're okay, as long as we understand that base is gravel, binder is binder and top is top.
Yep. See, you know, is this maybe something that, that, you know, you guys should work offline?
Yeah.
And just tighten up that length.
There should be a definition.
Yeah, if you'd allow that, yeah, I just, that's why I'm like, like a deer in headlights right now.
So we all are, that's what I'm saying. Um, but I, I think we also wanna clarify, what is the dri- where, what is the driveway? Right, and where does that end? And I'm looking at that picture, and I think that it ends somewhere behind building two, I assume that, that second building.
Yeah.
Two.
Yeah.
I, you know, but I think we may wanna clarify that.
Yeah. Right, I guess, after the community center.
It's a, it's a good idea, yeah.
Yeah, well, that's, but that's, he says parking that serves building two.
Yeah.
But what is the driveway? And I think the driveway ends there.
Yeah.
And then the other thing is, you know, he says fifty percent, uh, the, the next one, no more than half the occupancy permits. If I understand B, just really grossly paraphrase, basically, half the occupancy permits, everything needs to be done for infrastructure. Is that really, are you good with that? And I, you know, I don't know how you would, when you start getting into the last four buildings, is it possible you may build that building on the bottom first and not necessarily need everything else? So we may wanna think about how your phasing goes.
I gotta work online. Yeah, because it is on a hill, I might wanna do something different here, like here, I'm, I might, I may.
But, but basically, what we're saying is, once you get into building, well, it's, we get beyond building three. So you can do three by itself.
Right.
You can do the third building, I don't know what the numbers are, I can't see them, but you can do the third building by itself, but by the time you get to a fourth building, you gotta do everything.
Long after your third ball, the community centers make seven buildings, so half.
But that's an oc- but it talks about occupancy permits.
Right.
But you still have one for the, for the leasing office.
We still have occupancy permit.
Yeah, but that would just be considered a unit.
I mean, I'm, I'm seeing this phase.
Oh, yeah, I know, okay, cause you're only getting seven occupancy permits anyway.
You get the seven, so half would be three and a half, so you probably wanna say of the residential, half occupancy of the residential buildings be issued.
I think, right, so I, I think the point here is, I think you, I think you guys should think about this, and then I think we can, you know, tighten it up offline and.
If, if you, if you can, I, I, yeah, I just need a little bit of time to I, I, I think I can do more, I just don't wanna
Right.
uh, uh, commit to it right now, I, I, that's probably the reality, I just, I just need a
Yeah.
twenty minutes. Twenty minutes.
Yeah, you know, I, I, and really, I guess I'm just trying to avoid the, you know, you're coming back in here for a modification or.
Yeah, sure, absolutely.
Has to be, that's what it has to be as well.
I appreciate that, yeah, that, that, and that's fine too, yeah.
Bob will go by.
Oh, yeah, no, that's what I'm worried about.
And it'll get passed to me to find, look through it.
The first ten minutes was me deciding, and the second ten minutes was gonna be, how's Bob again?
Right, so just FYI.
Alright, so we got a little bit of work to do here.
So just so I'm clear, it, it looks to me like there's really two phases, there's the first two buildings up front, and then you got the, the. Four buildings that are served by the parking lot in the back. So, is the board comfortable with allowing the first two buildings to be occupied? With all the infrastructure serving that building to be completed, but, but letting the, basically the back part of the site be treated separately? And I would structure, I, I would really change this language, cause it needs to be completely modified to, to basically allow for that kind of phasing.
Yeah, Dan, I, I think the board is, and I don't wanna speak for everybody, so, uh, but, 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 but my point was. By the way, the nature of that site is, it may not be as simple as what you just said. Whereas you've got this first phase of the first two buildings, and then the second phase, which is the other four. It may be, and I think that's what, you know, the applicant needs to go off and think about, you know, i- i- it may, there may be three phases.
That's what I was just thinking.
Stop building in the back, so you're not driving by the occupied units to build the back.
Well, okay.
Yeah, that's, that, yeah, I, I just need a little bit of time.
Yeah, so, I, I, I don't, so, I, I think, I think the takeaway is, it may not be two phases, it may be more than that, and I think that's what they need to go off and think about. And, and I think that, you know, I don't think it's that big a deal to tighten that language up offline. You know, and we just deal with it when we, when we get to the point of a decision.
Okay, so I'll wait to hear from, um. The applicant.
Yeah, yeah, I'll, I'll reach out to you, Dan, because, you know, the, the, the. Yes, there's several things, and, um. And it's, it's, it's good for everybody, actually, I think I can aggressively get all the foundations in right after each other, and, you know, big, I just don't wanna overcommit. And I have to have proper access for Bob and everything, and still think about, you know, when, if people are gonna be living there, what's the access look like? How, how the fire trucks get in or out of there, and not disturb people, so that, I, I just need a little bit of time.
We'll circle back in the next day.
Alright, so I don't think there's anything else to talk about on H, moving to I, uh, stormwater.
One thing on H, do we need some separate bond or surety? For the, the sewer that's in the road, in the public road?
Doesn't the sewer department do something?
Typically, it's mass DOT would, if it's their road, I'm probably, might have to post a bond. Even though it's kind of a.
But that would be a permanent bond almost, right?
But sewers said they will do all the inspections. They personally and they had the property.
What's the, Brian, what, what is your concern? Wh- wh- what would the need for be for the surety for the sewer?
Because it's a. The applicant's gonna own that sewer pipe in the road. So if that, you know, if they go away and it's not maintained. It becomes the town's problem.
Oh, I mean, after it's been built and. And occupied.
That's really the apartment's problem, because it's a sewer. Doesn't go uphill without a pump, so it's, it's always the apartment buildings' problem.
Well, I mean, I, I wasn't really even thinking about the. More just that. That force main that's in the road and the other infrastructure involved in that, that's on. You know, town property.
And it's, you're talking about after it's built, not before.
Yes, interesting thought, I, I can run it by Paul. You know, I don't know if he's done this for other projects, required any kind of surety, but.
And at the end of the day, after it's built, it's in DOT's jurisdiction.
What, what do you mean by that?
Yeah, why don't, why don't you check with Paul, just to make sure there's nothing else we should be adding here? Yeah, I, my gut tells me it's just one of those risks the town is just kinda stuck with.
But I thi, I think it would be good, at least to get from Jeff or Paul, just a cost estimate, so we know what the. That monetary risk is. You know, over, you know, thirty years, it may not be worth it, just the administration of that, you know. The administration of holding a bond.
Alright, so, um, section I. Uh, I one is the same, uh, I two, I. Made a condition that the applicant just complies with Jeff's additional requirements from his letters, minor, minor changes to the plans. I three is the same. I four is the same. I five is the same. I, I have two I fives, I gotta change the numbering there. So, the second I five, which is now I six. Um, that's the, that's the condition that requires them to build the force main, install it, put it in the street. The pump station and all on, onsite in per, pertinences shall remain private in perpetuity. Um, the design of the sewer, the connection. I gotta, I gotta fix that sentence, the design of the sewer connection shall comply with the Grafton Sewer Department's regulations. And then I put another sentence in here that the applicant should provide access to the pump station for the wastewater needs of other properties on this. Short section of Old Upton Street. I thought we talked about this at the last meeting, but I don't, I don't remember. Is that something that the applicant is okay with, or?
What do you mean access, provide access? You mean like piping, access for pipes to connect to it?
Yeah, so my concern, um, and I think Paul's concern as well, I talked to Paul this afternoon, is that. You know, what if the guy next door wants to do a forty B and throw up sixteen units? And wants to tie into the force main? So the, the town of Grafton has a policy that you can't connect to a force main. And so the only way to provide access would be to, for the butter. To have the flow go down to your pump station and then put into your force main that goes up to Upton Street.
Why wouldn't he have his own force main?
That's what, that's what I would propose.
I think that's what we settled on, that that would be more.
The whole thing would remain.
Cause the sizing of this pump station and force main is critical to the flow it's gonna get exclusively from this project.
So you'd have to actually size the pump station for all of the street.
And it could be oversized, and they could never connect. Cause oversizing a pump station is just as bad as undersizing.
Yeah, Dan, I, I don't, I don't remember really coming to that sort of a conclusion, I, in, um. Yeah, I don't, I don't, I don't remember coming to that conclusion, and I'm, I'm a little surprised if Paul said anything like that, I'm. Doesn't seem like it would even.
No, he didn't, he didn't say that, I, it just, he said that that was an option, that, that, that in order, because they don't allow connections, so. I'm just thinking outside the box, like, how do you get, how would you get the wastewater up to the town's, you know, manhole at Pigeon Hill? And, and you'll, the only way to do that, well, I mean, there's, there's other ways, I mean, they could connect, the, the, the town could waive its. Prohibition and allow a connection to the force main if the butter also had its own pump. Otherwise, they'd have to put their own force main, and you have all these, all these force mains running next to each other in the street.
And I, I thought that's where we landed.
Right, yeah.
That's what I recall, we said they could put a force main in.
I, I, I agree, that's where we landed, Dan.
Okay, alright, so let's take that out. And then I seven, um. So this actually comes from both the Pleasant Street project. Um, but also Paul's last letter to us, um, where he wanted to make sure there was gonna be testing done before. Flow starts to go through the pipes, so he wants there to be testing witnessed by his department. And basically a demonstration of proof that the system will operate, uh, in accordance with, with Paul's standards. Um, so that, that's an I seven. Uh, the next condition, which I'll renumber, um. Is the same language from Pleasant Street. Uh, same thing with the next paragraph. And then the last, uh, paragraph, the last condition, which is now I ten. Uh, the applicant shall construct the water main to serve the project, uh, connecting it from the existing. Water main at the intersection of Pigeon Hill Road.
Has, has anybody talked to the water department?
Yeah, we talk to them a lot.
Did they agree to, 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 to I eight?
The, as it's, as Dan has it numbered, or I ten?
I ten, the last, the last I.
Yeah, we talked to, um, Matt. And, um.
Yeah, I don't know him, I still.
Dave, Matt and Dave?
Dave Erickson.
But you talked about too? So they want you to hook in at Pigeon Hill?
Yep, and one pipe, one length of pipe past our side entrance, so if they wanna extend it to one forty. On the lower end, they could come off.
And I forgot on the plans, do you have to loop it inside your development?
Yeah, there's no double main going up the driveway.
I mean, there's no, it's, it's a loop. So there's no dead ends, in other words.
The site's a dead end, but it's short.
But the water can go up and around.
And which is good, it doesn't remain stagnant, cause there's a lot of.
Well, they don't like dead ends.
Yeah, and, and a lot of units are consuming it, which is good.
Dead end on the subdivisions be much different than a dead end here with this many people consuming water. To your point, it is looped on itself.
I mean, we're agreeing to something shown on the plans, and we haven't received anything from the water department saying. They didn't object to the project, and they said they had enough water, but they didn't say. Where anything's gonna be hooked, or how it's gonna be hooked, and we don't have any authority at all over them.
Then it doesn't matter.
I won't get water.
You don't play the game, you don't get it.
We're comfortable because we've had those conversations.
Yeah, yeah, exactly, that's why, we're comfortable.
And we do have the will serve letter, but I know that's what you said, we have a letter that says they'll serve the project, but. And Matt's comments to me, just as recent as the last week, were, you know, they wanna try to get, uh, everything ironed out. On the final construction plan, so they're not dealing with a separate set of plans than what the final plans are, so. He gave me, um, a couple of comments, and we're gonna make sure that they're on the final plans, but they were like. Again, like hydrant locations, valve, valve, you know, three-way valves, or. You know, or one-way valves, tapping sleeves, there won't be any tapping sleeves, but it'll be, you know. Mechanical joints.
Do you wanna get something from Matt? Is it, is Matt still the director?
He's, he's called a finance officer now, and Dave Erickson does day to day. I, we probably doesn't, don't need anything, cause.
It's on the final set, and I have to have it reapproved.
They, they, they have to do what the water district wants them to do.
Final set of plans, I have to have them reapproved by pretty much almost all the boards again. Including you guys, so it's.
I don't think we have to put off any time waiting for something like that.
Alright, so you're, so you, so you guys will be okay with a condition that requires water department approval of the, of the extension?
You got a will serve letter.
That, that was a question to the applicant.
I, I feel like we already have that with the will serve letter, Dan.
Well, no, but Peter's point is that they may not have. Reviewed your connection plan, right? They don't, I, that, that's the issue, is that have, do they understand that this is gonna be a dead end? Extension down to the site.
Yes, they absolutely.
Yeah, a hundred percent.
Yeah, well, they, they wanted to extend it, th- that, they, they liked it because they're gonna take it from our site and eventually go towards Upton with it. With the main, so it was, it was a plus to them.
Yeah, doing a bunch of that work for them.
Yeah, it was more or less. Yeah, it was more or less free for them, cause we're gonna do all the work to get it closer to Upton, which was on their long-term. Master plan.
Okay, so if, if they're okay with it, can I, is, is it okay for me just to put a condition in that says that this is subject to the approval of the water department?
Yeah, yeah, I don't have, yeah, I don't have a problem with it, yeah.
That be I eleven?
I'll just add that to I ten. Um, so offsite mitigation, I, I don't think we had. Any offsite mitigation, any physical mi- mitigation that we discussed. Um, at least I didn't see any of my notes or any of the documents, is that correct?
Yeah, I think there would have been if, if Old Upton Street was a town road, but it's state, so I think a lot of that got kicked into that category.
Yeah, and other than your tree, our tree clearing, but I think you've got that covered as well.
The tree clearing for the site distances?
Yes, I believe so, yeah, I think you've got that, you probably have that covered somewhere. I think we put it on the plan recently as well.
Yeah, I'm not sure if it is in the condition, but I'll, I'll go back and look. So then, then the only mitigation condition is, is the MOU. Um, language, which I just copied and pasted into, well, I didn't copy and paste it, but I, I incorporated it into here, so it's a hundred and fifty thousand total. Uh, in six installments, one for each building that's permitted.
Yeah, that's correct.
So, yeah, K, L, M are all the same, and that takes us to the waivers. So I think we ran through these once or twice already, um. I mean, do you wanna go through them again, Bill, or?
I, I don't think we need to, I think we, uh, we've gone through them, and, you know, I'm assuming that this is, you know, what was. You know, we've already gone through, I mean, the applicant, I'm sure will take a close look. But, um, I don't expect, I mean, you do have something highlighted here on, uh, the second page, section four, four, three, three, one. Twenty-five square foot wall sign at the project entrances are in issues.
I just wanna make sure you're okay with that, cause that, that was what was done in Pleasant Street. I don't know if we talked about the si, the si, the, the sign here.
That's what we did for Pleasant Street? Yeah, probably make it work.
Yeah, it's probably gonna be something similar.
Yeah, okay.
Actually, on, on number. I think it's number, waiver number ten. Can we just add the language, I think we used it in Pleasant Street as well, to say that. We allowed that in consideration of the total parcel.
Yeah, I, I, I didn't do that because they changed, the applicant changed the, the other column. To basically show both ways, right? So it's a hundred and fifty-two units on. The, a total of fifteen acres, it's also a hundred and fifty-two units on ten development acres. So that we see both densities already in column two, but, I mean, I could still add.
If, if you think that covers it, that, I'm, I'm good with it.
And that's consistent with what we did over in Pleasant Street? I know we went back and forth on that a little bit. If that's consistent, I, I think we probably just could go with that.
What we didn't do in Pleasant Street, the applicant didn't actually break it down the way he did here. So that, that's actually nice, that they, they broke it down both ways, so we can see it, and it's, it's, so for the record. Yeah, we, we see it both ways, calculated both ways, and I think that, that was the important part.
Okay, then I'm good with it.
Twenty-two lighting, the light. Twenty-two, lighting, the light that the town's gonna own at the bottom of the driveway. It doesn't say it has to be the town specs, just to, it, all we, we're wavering everything to be as approved, what the approved plan set shows, and I don't know what the plan set shows for that particular light. I'm not questioning the lights in the, in the complex itself, that's their, their thing, but the one that the town ha- is gonna own it should be the same as all the town ones.
But I think, I think it will be, Peter, I mean, cause that's, the section talks about requirements of the select board, and all we're doing is wavering it to provide lighting as shown on the, on the plan set.
Yeah, what's. What?
I think we'll own it.
Oh, you think he'll own it?
Yeah, we never intended for it to be a town streetlight.
Okay, I mean, usually it's a a streetlight that's at a street and.
Right, right.
If you're gonna own it, I have.
I think we're gonna own it, I think there was uh, where that other driveway came in, there was already a a pole and a light over there. So I think we can get away with having that stay like that, and then we can have one of ours at our intersection.
That's fine.
That's where that came.
We weren't too sure where, I think, yeah, I remember when you came to the site visit, we were kinda walking back and forth, and and that that's exactly right, so I think we're covered there, because that existing pole already has a light that covers their driveway. So then we can come off of ours with our, our new private one.
And it's got, and that light that you're talking about, it's for the intersection.
Yeah, it works two ways, intersection and for the uh, butter, yeah.
Okay, I'm fine, though.
Great.
Alright, any else you wanna talk about, Dan, on this?
I don't think so, I think we've, um. Gone through the waivers pretty carefully, but you know, again, if the applicant wants to review this, um, with a fine tooth comb and make make sure I didn't make any mistakes, or if there's anything that needs to get changed, let me know.
Alright.
Yeah, well, yeah, we'll do do that, and then plus I owe you the comments from previously discussed about the, kind of the phasing thing, so.
Right.
Uh, we are in a public hearing, so is there anyone that, um. Connected that wants to say anything, or online, or no more letters received, or?
No, we have not.
Alright, Dan, any reason I should not close this public hearing at this point, Dan?
I can't think of any reason.
Alright, here we go. Entertained a motion to close case number eight ninety-eight, Upton Road Properties Reserve at Mesco Hills.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, um, for this case, um, I think the only voting.
You, Brian, Peter, and Yeomans.
Yeah, I'm not.
Jiffy's out and Metalli's gone, so it's just you, Brian, Peter, and Bill Yeomans.
Okay. Alright, so motion made and seconded, any discussion, hearing none, uh, roll call vote, uh, we'll start Mr. Yeomans.
Yes.
Mr. Adams?
Yes.
Mr. Waller?
Yes.
Vice chairman votes yes. Alright, case is closed, so um, the hearing is closed. So the next step is to basically finalize the decision, Dan's gonna work on that, the applicant's, um. Also gonna review it in between the applicant and Dan, they'll, they'll fine tune the decision. We need to get back together to vote on it, so how far out should we be looking? We, two weeks, one week? What do you wanna do? I I start with you, Dan, how much time do you, do you think?
Well, I don't need a lot of time, but the problem is I've got a trial that starts on February twelfth, um. I I'm really pretty jammed next week, and the week after, um.
All within forty days, we're safe.
I mean, it's up to, up to you, I mean.
Yeah, but those guys can do it.
So Dan, what I'm hearing is, you, what, you're, you're pretty jammed up through like the sixteenth?
Yeah.
So the twenty-second?
Yeah, I, yeah, I can do that, I mean, it's school vacation week, but I'll, I'll be around.
I'm fine.
Mr. Yeomans, you good with the twenty-second? You're on mute, Bill.
And Katrina, do we have anything else coming up?
Yes, the twenty-second is good.
I'm just checking to make sure I can get the conference room right now.
CPC's in here, but I can try and move them.
Alright, I mean, I need, actually, you know.
I mean.
We don't, we, we don't have to schedule, we're, the public hearing is closed, so we can pencil in a meeting for the twenty-second.
Yeah, I just need to know to be able to book it.
Yeah, so let's, let's shoot for that.
Twenty-second, but it's open on the twenty-ninth, so it's up to you guys.
Let's, let's shoot for the twenty-second.
We're gone, but you guys can do it.
Gone when?
Yeah, I'm I'm gone, but I I I'm confident I don't need to be here for the final.
For the twenty-second?
Yeah, yeah. The second, we'll, we'll rely on, we'll rely on, you know, turning point to head it up.
I mean.
So wait, are you guys here the twenty-second?
We're here the twenty-second, we're just away.
Nah, we're at a builder's show.
We're at the builder's conference.
Las Vegas, yeah.
Okay, so the twenty-second works.
No, we're away the twenty-second.
No, we're away the twenty-ninth.
Oh, we are?
We're away the twenty-ninth, we're here the.
Oh, if you're here, but I'm not, never mind, I'm not here, if he's here, that's fine. I'm, I'm, I'm going to an equipment auction, Peter.
Oh, Florida, huh?
Yeah, sorry. Exactly. So Chris.
We're shooting for the twenty-second.
Yep, Chris and the guys can do it, yeah.
Alright, we'll, we'll shoot for the twenty-second, and um. You know, but we still have a few weeks after that, uh, leeway, um, but let's, let's just plan for the twenty-second. And and I didn't hear your response to, um, Kay when she asked about, do we have any other cases?
No.
Okay.
We have nothing right now.
Perfect, we like it that way. I like it that way. Alright, um, then I'll turn the meeting back over to Mr. Waller.
Excellent.
Oh, 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 wait, 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 no, we need to continue.
New Elm Rock.
Elm Rock.
Oh, yeah, 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 technically, yeah.
Alright, so, um, so now entertain a motion to continue number case number eight twenty-seven to uh, February twenty-second at seven PM.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, uh, again, roll call vote, we'll start with you, Mr. Yeomans.
Yes.
Uh, Ms. Reed?
Yes.
Mr. Waller?
Yes.
Mr. Adams?
Yes.
Vice chairman votes yes. Alright, so this is continued to. Alright, that's that.
I've been, I've been there.
It's gonna be on the video.
Alright, turn the meeting back over to Mr. Waller.
Uh, thank, thank you all, thank you, Dan.
Good night.
Good night.
Alright, so we have the minutes from January eleventh?
Yep.
Any, uh. Comments or edits?
I didn't see anything, I read through them this afternoon. Katrina has my copy.
I didn't, I read it, didn't see anything that needed to be changed.
Yeah.
I don't, I don't have any.
So I entertain a motion to accept the minutes from January eleventh as drafted.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, roll call vote, Ms. Reed?
Yes.
Mr. McCusker?
Yes.
Mr. Adams?
Yes.
Mr. Yeomans?
Yes.
Chairman votes yes. And I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, Ms. Reed?
Yes.
Mr. McCusker?
Yes.
Mr. Adams?
Yes.
Mr. Yeomans?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Chairman votes yes.